Yeah, okay.
Hello and welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Atascadero Planning Commission Agenda. Today is Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, it is six-ish. And then I'm going to adjourn this meeting right away. I'm just kidding, you fools. Commissioner O'Malley is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carranza.
Present.
Commissioner David. Commissioner Heath.
Present.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Present.
Commissioner Panaccio.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Anderson.
Here.
Chairperson Keane.
Here.
All present.
Okay, can we get an approval of the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Heath.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Most definitely.
Commissioner David.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Panaccio.
Yes.
And Chairperson Keane. Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and if you want to come up to the podium, you state your name for the record before speaking. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and we will move on to the consent calendar. I just need somebody to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I can second that motion.
Sorry, who seconded that?
Commissioner O'Malley.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Vice Chairperson Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner David.
Yes.
Commissioner Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Panaccio.
Yes.
And Chairperson Keane.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to Planning Commission business, and I just wanted to touch base on the DRC because we had two Planning Commissioners volunteer to be on the DRC, but according to one of them, they haven't heard anything, so I just wanted to check in on that.
Did they miss the hearing that we just had?
I would assume yes, because they hadn't heard anything about being on the DRC.
It's April 1st, so we can do those kinds of things. We haven't had a hearing scheduled yet, haven't had any items ready for DRC, and we'll let you know as soon as we do have, and they'll get to enjoy their first hearing.
Okay, great.
Coming soon. Thank you.
You're fired, Phil. Oh wait, I was supposed to say April Fools, right? Okay, we'll move on to Community Development Staff Reports, and I am, I actually read the entire thing, and I am so ready to be dazzled, and I have like a million questions, so hit me.
Wonderful. Here we are. So, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commission. We're going to share with you some background and information for our general plan update, especially since we've got three new commissioners here on the commission. We wanted to start off with the basics, in addition to telling you some of the details of where we're at. This project has been...
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt you, because we had public comment on things that were not on our agenda, and I closed it, but I forgot about the letter that we were sent, which is not about something we have on our agenda, and are we supposed to address that during the public comment?
If it was not for an item on the agenda, we should address that during the general public comment, yes.
Okay, can we go back in time?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to reopen public comment, because we got a letter about...
I think our city attorney may want to weigh in for a second.
Oh.
No, that's fine. We're reopening general public.
General public comment, yes, because we got a letter about, I can never remember the name, Oaks, Oak Ridge Estates?
Yes.
Okay, so I've talked with you a little bit about it, but can you just give a general overview, because we got like a three-page letter about it in public comment.
Is it a letter from Claudia?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, and I have spoken to that resident many, many occasions, and there is a significant grading violation that the city is proactively enforcing right now. They did do grading within an area that is part of the open space greenbelt of Oak Ridge Estates, and they did unauthorized grading of a pad there, and we are requiring Oak Ridge Estates to regrade that and put it back to a natural state and revegetate it. Restoration is the term that we'll give that. So they've been written a very lengthy letter to do that, and we're going to be working with them to make sure that gets fixed, but that's going to take some time. The work they did was substantial. The lady that wrote you the letter, she does have valid points. It is a significant issue. This grading does back up to her property and is visible from the back of her property, and she was concerned about drainage, erosion, sedimentation into her property, and so it's a significant issue that we're dealing with, but it's going to take some time to unravel, and that's all I can tell you at this time.
So, we don't know if it has triggered a new environmental impact report or any kind of...
I'll just note here, if we do have some questions about this specific project, we're in general public comment, so it's just to read the comment or note the comment on the record. We'll close that, and then we'll continue with our community development item, and then for the, I think there's a Planning Commission, Commissioner Comments and Reports where you can mention this later on.
Okay, then I will close public comment. Thank you, Phil, and we will return to our general plan update.
Thank you, Chair, and I'll just rehash. A lot of what we're saying tonight is going to be really for those that are new on the commission, but we're also going to give you a really big overview of the general plan update and tell you where we're at. We're a pretty good way through the process. We started this process all the way back in July of 2021, so it's really already been three years. I can't believe it, but we've made a substantial amount of progress. If we can go to the next slide here. We're trying to go move on, and I'll give you some background. The good thing is, we've already started the Environmental Impact Report, which is a significant part of this effort, and now that we have the estimated population numbers, we have the estimated growth, we've got the estimated circulation, we can start that EIR. An EIR is subject to some strict notification guidelines and timelines. That's really what's going to take us the most amount of time. Here we go. So, what is a general plan? I mean, it's basically a framework for all the land use and zoning that we do in our city, but not only land use and zoning, it also has policies that deal with safety, like earthquakes and fires, has policies that deal with things like noise, has policies that deal with our housing of our community, has policies that deal with our economy. All of those factors, all of those things are in a framework in different chapters. We can go past this slide. I don't like fine print too much. But really, to boil it down, the state of California has seven mandated elements. I was going to hide this slide and see which one of you could guess, but we already have the slide up, so now that's there. But what we're able to do as a city, we're able to actually combine them in any way, shape, or form we want, as long as we address all those seven topic areas. So what we're going to have is a land use and community form element, recreation, open space, natural resources, mobility, which is circulation really, and then public services and infrastructure, and then a safety, which will include noise and other things, and I'll tell you again in the end maybe about the actual chapters and how it's laid out. So what there will be is there will be a document, which is a substantial document with all these policies, and then there'll be a map, which is called General Plan Map, that shows where all the land use areas are, where all the things will be developed. And then, as a supplement to all of this work, which we're working on in concert with this effort, is a whole new zoning regulations and all of the zoning policies, things like setbacks and height, and the details about each land use and what goes on in every district. We're writing that now as well. So here's the whole layout of the whole process. These are all the pieces of the story. We started with a community engagement series number one, which we called a Vision for the Future. Then we went on to the Community Engagement Series number two, which we called Exploring the Possibilities. And then, our very next one, which we will actually bring forward, the General Plan Document for Public Circulation, is our Community Engagement Series number three, and that's yet to happen. And that's kind of right where we are right now. We're in this Phase Four. We're at the end phase, and this is the phase where, like I mentioned, we're able to start the EIR. We have the actual policies partially written, and as soon as they're in a more perfected form, we'll release those. You'll get to see a copy. All of the public will get to see a copy, and we'll have one or more open houses and city council meetings to invite the public so we can talk about it, and we can look at, you know, how these things are written and look at the policy framework. So for tonight's discussion, we're going to kind of give you a little bit of, just a little bit of the major policy approaches, place types, which are really a unique way to call zoning, and then the map, we're going to show you the map, and this is a map that our city council has already endorsed, the community's already seen it, and you're going to get to see that again tonight. And again, tonight's process is also about community feedback and comments. This is still a work in progress. None of it's finished, so we're continuously taking community feedback, every part of this process. Move on, please. And speaking of community engagement, and just kind of give you a little bit of where we've been, we had a couple of events at the lake park in 2023. We've had a couple of them here at City Hall, out in our foyer. Let me move on. We've had a lot of online surveys, and then let's keep going forward. And what we came up with is a series of what we call the Big Moves, and these represent the key land use objectives, so to help advance what the city council adopted is called, what was called these True North Statements. And so those are: create a mix of housing types, attract new industries and higher-wage jobs, improve access, mobility, safety, address our public infrastructure needs like wastewater and roads, and make sure we can pay for all these things through fiscal sustainability. At the end of the day, I can boil this down to give our city a good jobs and housing mix that's balanced, where our kids can actually stay here and get a job, where we don't have too much housing or not enough housing. Our surrounding communities are different. San Luis Obispo, for example, doesn't have enough housing, has a lot of jobs in industry. Atascadero has more jobs and has a higher ratio of housing to jobs, so a lot of people drive out in the morning. A healthy community has an equal mix or the right ratio, and generally what these things get to is that. So are we trying to make Atascadero bigger and different? No, we're simply trying to make Atascadero whole. That's really the objective, is how can we have a complete community that we, where we can afford to pay for things, where we can have those higher-end jobs in the community, where we can go out to eat and have the right choices for restaurants, or where you can buy a pair of socks, which is difficult to do right now. We shouldn't have to go out of our community to do that. That's all we're asking for at the end of the day. So place types, this is about using pictures and graphics and images to essentially create your zoning and what each one means. They're similar to land use designations, which are just, you know, like, single-family, multifamily, commercial, industrial, except, you know, we use scale, design quality, and relationship to the street to address those through this image, image kind of process. Let's keep going with the slides. So, these cards remind me of Monopoly cards. Or, don't they, or do they look like... It's interesting, but basically, these are our place types. This first one is rural residential. A lot of Atascadero is rural residential today. Interesting thing about this general plan update, we pretty much cut out the entire west side rural area to even consider doing anything different. It's an area that we consider to be primarily built out. It doesn't have access to wastewater services. It doesn't have great road access. It has significant fire hazard areas. It's an area that we can't really change much in the future, except ensure that the quality of life there is protected and that, you know, we don't see significant new subdivisions or development unless there's significant infrastructure and safety issues that can be addressed. The next step up from that is what we call single-family residential, one to four units an acre, and that is a lot of Atascadero as well. It exists a lot in the areas that look like they're yellow on that map, and you can see the yellow outline on those pictures represent the district of where these areas are. There's a ton of yellow on the map, and a lot of that is in the northeast quadrant of the city, or the area that lies between Highway 41 and Highway 101, and then some more on the southeast quadrant of the city, south of Pine Mountain. You can see, in those areas, it's the single-family residential, we say one to four, and that's on the general plan map. When we actually create a zoning map, it's going to have, you know, more than one zoning district in it, and that's what we're working on right now, based on topography and based on access and based on its access to sewer as well. We'll determine the ultimate zoning of each one of those properties. Move on, please. And then we get into the multifamily districts, and we're going to have two of those, the low-density multifamily and the medium-density multifamily, and you can see on the graphic map image to the right there where generally those areas are, and those are generally going to be really close to the major arterial roadways like Highway 41 and El Camino Real and Traffic Way, and a couple of offshoots from that, where you've got the much higher levels of transportation, where you've got the infrastructure, where you've got the adequate fire service, and where you've got the wastewater to serve those properties. In those areas, we are exploring going up a little bit in density to encourage the redevelopment of some of the sites that are underdeveloped today, where we need to have a little more density to meet the future needs of the community, and where it makes sense. And then lastly, the high density. So we actually have, did I say two multifamily? I meant three. The third one got left on the second page. So again, very similar, just a little higher density, a little more units, a little more vertical development with this district, a little more height. Next. And then, what we're seeing a ton of these days is mixed use. Definition of mixed use being commercial combined with residential, typically commercial on the ground floor with residential above, but in some cases residential beside or behind on a single level, on a single lot, and we're seeing, a lot of our new projects are mixed use. You know, we're seeing mixed use at Dove Creek. We're seeing mixed use even in the Valley Fresh Grocery Store Shopping Center at Del Rio. Pretty much every project we're seeing in a commercial zone now has some residential above it. This helps bring people into those areas. It also helps balance the project fiscally, and it kind of makes sense. I mean, it's a really, it's a good way to develop that needed housing, and some of these units are really nice. And in those areas, we're actually exploring a higher density, similar to what you'd see in the high-density multifamily districts. And it's similar, I mean, these are projects that are similar to La Plaza Downtown, for example. Now, in the downtown itself, which is the other district there, which is the area that's right around City Hall, right here, right now, is another area where we entertain mixed use and a higher height level as well. Our city council says, can we actually have a fourth story on our buildings? Right now, our zoning code pretty much limits us to three stories. Could we go four stories and keep the character of our community so we can get that extra density, so we can encourage the redevelopment of sites that are vacant today by adding this value to them and making it pencil? As long as we can fit the parking, we can do it, and as of today, parking's not an issue. We hope parking's an issue one day, because when parking is an issue, it means that your community is getting to that spot where the land value is high enough to develop surface parking and change it, and so that means, you know, you've reached that critical mass. And then, commercial. What does that mean? Well, it's our, it's our general commercial zones, and it could be your service-type uses, it could be your retail-type uses, it could be your office-type uses, and this will be broken down into a couple different zoning types, but generally, that's where you see your Bond Shopping Center and your other general commercial areas that aren't downtown. They aren't mixed use, but they're just plain commercial. You always got to have that. And then there's the last two. Innovation Flex is a new one for us. That's one we're introducing where we intend to have spaces that are set up for R&amp;D, light manufacturing, creative industries. This is where we want the head of household jobs, where we have some tech and some interesting things, maybe even medical research, things like that. Not quite industrial, but not quite commercial, something in between. And we've set aside some areas where we think this would be a great fit, and these are areas that are today that are commercial, are not changing from residential or something else, but these are areas today that are either underutilized commercial or in the commercial park zone on the north El Camino Real, in between El Camino Real and the freeway. And then lastly, industrial. And actually, industrial, I'll tell you, we have a significant shortage in Atascadero. Atascadero suffers from a significant shortage of flat land that is in an area that has good vehicular circulation, has good access, or has the services like wastewater and other things that we need. When our community was founded, our industrial zone developed where the railroad spur was, where we had a railroad station, a train station in town, where goods and services were able to be dropped off and picked up. That's how our industrial zone develops, and that's how old it is, and it's established along Traffic Way and along Sycamore out by the river for that reason. We don't intend to change that, but if we were to replan and reorganize our whole city today, it might be a different layout. But it's also, even if it was, it's very difficult to locate that. Where is there this expansive flat land where we can do that? City of Paso Robles, they have a little more of that. They're able to get those industrial parks. That's difficult to fit, so we're trying to hang on to what we have in our community, but I don't see that we'll be able to expand it a lot. And this is a good conversation to have, because you'll know that as we move forward and talk about new land uses and what we do with our properties, we get a lot of requests all the time for things like RV storage, boat storage, outdoor storage, vehicle yards, things like that. And those are things that we may not have room for in Atascadero when we're trying to create working industrial, when we're trying to create innovation flex, when we have so little flat land and so little flat land close to services. Do we have room for that? And so those are the kind of questions that we'll be facing you and the city council as we develop the more intimate pieces of the definitions of our zoning. And today, those are already conditionally allowed uses, but should we even allow them? And I think we have, you know, that's a fact that's going to come up here soon, as we're processing a use permit in the near future for a use just like that. Let's move on. Got to have room for parks and open space, and definitely want to designate our public uses as public, like our fire stations and our schools and our city hall. Those will all be what we consider public uses, and then our parks, not only our parks that are formal, but our parks that are informal and our open space areas like Pine Mountain and Three Bridges and the Jim Green Trail and other future areas where we can have trails, but then our parks as well, and we'll do an analysis of that. So we started a lot of this process by creating focus areas and looking at areas that were underutilized, and what has opportunity? Where can we fit new things? Where can we put head of household jobs and innovation in flex? Where can we build new parks? Where can we support our finances for our community? And a lot of this was done with community input, but it was done with the council input and staff and our consultant that's working with this on us, MIG. And so these areas, A through K, were sort of these focus areas. We looked at Ramona Road, Del Rio, San Benito, San Anselmo, Traffic Way, and Sycamore, the downtown, of course. And the downtown already has its own path. It's actually coming along great. Really happy about the downtown project on El Camino Real. The Triangle Neighborhood, which is the area I touched on earlier, between Highway 41, sort of the crossover of Portola or Atascadero Avenue, and the freeway, and then the south, Atascadero Commercial, and the south gateway, which is the Dove Creek Project that's going to start up here soon. Those are these areas that we can really focus on and start thinking about, you know, what are the missing pieces in these areas to enrich them? So from that emerged this preferred alternative, and a preferred alternative is, I don't know why it shrunk. It's not supposed to be that small, but maybe, is that the only map we have? Do we, we'll come back to this. What you're supposed to see is a detail. Oh, okay, great. We'll get there. Let's move on. But what I wanted to show you is the emerging alternative really is the city's, oh, here we go, the city's basic general plan diagram. And this came together from city council direction, community feedback, and then what we can accommodate, which is called capacity analysis. What we have, you know, in terms of infrastructure and physical constraints, a lot of Atascadero is so constrained by topography and the lack of the ability to connect services to them. Let's move on. So here it is. That striped area is actually Eagle Ranch, and it's actually within the city's planning area. It's within our, what we call our urban reserve line, but it's not in our city, and we don't intend to include it in our city with this general plan in terms of an annexation. If a project ever happens in Eagle Ranch, it will be based upon an applicant coming forward and asking to be in the city and amending our general plan at that time. For us to consider that would be a significant consideration. It would ultimately impact our ability to provide services and would have to be separately analyzed. But I wonder if we can zoom into this a little bit closer to downtown. Is that even possible, I wonder? Oh, we can. Look at that. That's amazing, and that's really helpful, because we don't need to even look at the west side, because it's all just going to stay rural residential. And we have this broken down. The zoning is going to be separated parcel to parcel, and what you're looking at, just to again tell you, it's not a zoning map. Looks like a zoning map, but it's really a general plan map. And what's the difference between a general plan map and a zoning map? I'll tell you, because you don't have to ask you, but it's always confusing. There's the general plan and there's the zoning. They're very similar. They're very interrelated, but the general plan, just like the word general, is more generalized. In other words, there's fewer districts. Like, for example, the general plan may just show one area for commercial, which is red, but the zoning may break that commercial area down into three districts. It might be the service-type commercial, the retail-type commercial, and something else. And then, for example, the single-family residential could be the same. It might have three different zones in it, although right there it just says "single family," but based upon what we can do with that area, based on topography or wastewater access or lot size, we can break that down further. So that's really the only difference. They really share a lot of the same things. So you're kind of looking at a zoning map. So this is the layout that we propose for our future. If you were to look at our existing general plan map and this general plan map side by side, you're not going to see a lot of difference. We're not suggesting a change to the city's boundary. We're not suggesting a change to the city's urban reserve line. We're not suggesting significant changes to where we expect commercial development to occur, and we're not putting in significant changes to where residential development should occur. Instead, if you think about it this way, we are suggesting increases to the amount of density that can go in some of the existing residential zones to respond to not only state law, but housing demand. We are looking to make some of our commercial zones more flexible with a broader range of more contemporary commercial uses. We are looking to be much more specific as to where mixed use can go, and maybe allowing some mixed use to have side by side with residential on the ground floor in addition to commercial in areas that are suitable for that. And then, we are also looking at being more specific to attract those head of household jobs. That's really it. So this general plan is not a significant change. A lot of folks have requested changes to their property based upon their personal needs, and a large portion of those are going to be able to be incorporated into this new zoning map, and most of those requests are, can I get a smaller lot size? Can I get more units on my property, which increases the value of their property? So I understand that. And a lot of those requests are happening, not all of them, because a lot, some of them can't happen because of the lack of ability for the city to provide the necessary resources or for those lots to be below the size of what we can accommodate, because there's no wastewater services there. Anything else we should add to that discussion? Way I'm going with that, Kelly? Great. So I kind of touched on this earlier, but I wanted to lay this out. This is how the book, the general plan document is going to look. It's going to have a nice introduction section that talks about the general ways and means of Atascadero. It's going to tell you about our vision and guiding principles of how we got here. It's going to talk about our land use, basically our land use map we just looked at in our city form and what we expect in each of these areas. It's going to talk about how we can finance the city's services, the fire department, the police department, the roads, wastewater treatment plant through this development. So that's, that'll be our economic development section in addition to how we can grow our economy. Our housing element, we're not going to touch that. We work on the housing element in a very different cycle. It's on an eight-year cycle. And so we're just going to plug that into this new general plan because it's already done. Our mobility, that's going to see some changes and some modernization in terms of how we handle traffic and transportation. And these days, we look at transportation impacts a whole different way than the last time we published a general plan. And it's called VMT. So you're going to get used to that term because it stands for vehicle miles traveled. And in the old days, we used the term LOS, which was levels of service. And I'll just describe that to you really quickly. 10 years ago, we would look at, you know, levels of service, how fast you can get through an intersection. And a level of service for a vehicle, when it's really good, an A means for a pedestrian, it's probably going to be a D or an F because that pedestrian is going to get sidelined. A level of service A for a pedestrian might mean a level of service D or F for a vehicle. That's how it used to roll. We always designed roads and intersections for level of service for vehicles. And in more recent years, we've modernized and the state of California has recognized that we don't need to do that. We would rather see some congestion and delay and make intersections safer for all kinds of modes of transportation. And instead, also, they want to see people driving less distance. So instead, we evaluate things now on the amount of vehicle miles traveled. And the further you have to travel, the greater the impact. So if you, if you design a community where everybody works outside of your community and it's all housing, you're going to have a very poor grade on your VMT. Whereas if you have a community that's whole, where you have jobs in your community and you have shopping in your community and people don't have to drive very far, regardless of how long the congestion is to get there, as long as it's safe, then you have a good VMT and you're actually going to get a good analysis when you're doing your environmental impact report. So that's part of the goal of us getting there with this general plan is to reduce our VMT and have a good grade when it comes to that with the EIR when it comes out. That's kind of it in a nutshell, those two different things. And that's how we're looking at things today. And then chapter seven, our recreation, open space and natural resources, our public services and infrastructure, how we can continue to have water service and wastewater service and roads. And we've always got to respond to safety and our emergency preparedness. And this, this section will have our fault maps in it for earthquakes. It'll have our latest fire hazard maps, which just came out, by the way. You probably heard about that on the news. The state delivered fire hazard maps to all the communities. So we're going to incorporate that. And a lot of other policies that recognize our need for safety in our community. So this general plan isn't just about land use. It's about every topic under the sun. And it's supposed to have a life of roughly 20 to 25 years. Our current general plan adopted in 2002, it's now 2025. So we're going to adopt this right at the right time for the expiration of that one and the next 25 years of Atascadero. So, next steps, what's happening next? Here we are, it's our little roller coaster of our general plan. Our community engagement number three. As we start to build our draft EIR, we're going to release the draft general plan chapters and bring folks in to talk about it or go out there to talk to them about it. We're going to come back to the planning commission and you guys will make a recommendation of the council on this big document. We're going to give it to you not just a few days ahead of your meeting. It's going to be a lot more time. You're going to need to digest it. We may need to meet one-on-one, two-to. It's going to be a big deal. It's not going to be like looking at a use permit. It's going to be a lot more. And then finally, to the city council for the adoption of this plan and certification of the EIR. And that's all going to happen late this summer, this year. We're going to get it done, right, Kelly? So, there it is. I think that's about all I'm going to tell you tonight. I know you've got a ton of questions. So sorry to belabor that topic, but it's a big one.
Can we, can we take a bathroom break really quick? Okay, Paul, and then we'll come back with questions. Okay, thanks.
You're going to want to just formally say we're going to take a brief recess, just to...
We're taking a brief recess.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and resume the meeting now.
If you want to just say the time that we're resuming the meeting?
6:43. Okay, so we're moving on to questions and since I'm the chair, I get to go first. So one of the letters that we got regarding this was about childcare. And I just wanted to ask, because I don't have our zoning memorized, but where do childcare facilities fit in right now? And how will they work in mixed use developments? And sort of how, how does childcare fit in with the general plan?
So childcare is typically allowed in most zoning districts. Right now, it's allowed in a residential district. Right now, it's allowed in a commercial district and multiple commercial districts. It's allowed almost anywhere, even as an accessory to an existing business. So I think we have to acknowledge it through policy development as we go through our general plan. We have to acknowledge that childcare is a necessary component in the community. If you want to have a healthy jobs and housing balance, you've got to have childcare so folks can go to work. And so there's, there's no barriers right now that are substantial to childcare. And we don't intend in putting it, to put any barriers in the general plan. We should also acknowledge it through policies that there needs to be ways to encourage more of it to become an accessory to existing businesses and future businesses. And it is allowed almost anywhere. I mean, it's really one of these land uses that you can put anywhere. And so that's really it.
And then I had another question about, if, if we're going to continue to build housing, you know, how are we, and I guess maybe this isn't a question for the city, but my concern is like with insurance prices, like how are we, how are people going to buy these homes that we're building if fire insurance for their house gets out of control? Like, have we, like ours, for my house went up 40%. So...
This is a statewide concern. This is a statewide issue. This is something that state policy is working on. This is something our fire chief is also working on to become what's called a fire safe community and, and to create new fire safe neighborhoods. And once you have these designations in certain particular neighborhoods, you actually can get, start getting, you know, reduced insurance rates. But this is a very challenging situation that we may not be able to work ourselves out of through general plan policy. But it has to happen at the state level and we have to get there. We're in a very unusual spot right now where the insurance rates are going up. Unfortunately, Atascadero does have a significant portion of the community that's going to be in a very high fire hazard severity zone. Much of the west side is in that today and much of the west side is going to remain that with our new fire hazard map. Now, that particular map isn't the only thing that insurance companies will use in determining fire risk or insurability. They use a whole number of parameters in a different way to measure that. And the second thing is, we can't control the fire hazard severity map. The state gives that to us. It's automatically made at state level. So there's a couple of things there. Basically, at the end of the day, I hate to tell you, but the insurance rate issue is out of our hands somewhat, but we're doing what we can through the state legislature to help fix that. It is a significant problem for a lot of us. We, all of us are being impacted by it. It is creating a burden on housing affordability. But so is the cost of construction and so is the cost of labor and so is the cost of land and so is the cost of the interest rates. None of these things are paying, are playing a favor to the homeowner or future homeowner right now. But it is an unusual time and I think things will change because we reached a peak of unaffordability in all of those areas.
I'm sure we'll go over more of those details in the housing element when that comes up.
Yes.
That's it for me right now. Somebody else have questions? No? Commissioner Cranza?
Yeah, I know we'll be doing discussion too after public comments, so I'll reserve more comments. But I did want to ask a question. So the focused area slide, I didn't get a snapshot of that in the report, but could you go back the focused area slide? It just seemed like that was a really good concise list. And I just wanted to go back to that. Okay. If you could just hold it on that for a second, that'd be helpful. Okay, all right, I'm good for now.
I have a question with regards to transportation, public transportation as we move forward, building these areas of mixed use, residential, commercial and industrial. Currently, all our public transportation through slow transit is running up and down El Camino Real. Is there, and I know this is not something that can be fixed in right away, but as we start building out these projects, which I think are very exciting, is there opportunities to work with them on developing public transportation routes that might include Moral Road out to Highway 41 and also Traffic Way down to the Sycamore area? If that's going to become an industrial area to provide public transportation for people who work in those areas?
That's a great comment and I can't, I don't know how to answer that question right now. It's something we would have to really engage RTA with and they would have to gauge whether there's enough ridership to expand beyond the areas that they have today. I've always thought that too. Yeah, Moral Road is a big area where we're wanting to develop, you know, more of these mixed use projects, more commercial. There's a lot of infill that's going to happen there. How do we serve those areas with transit? And that's a question for RTA, it's at the regional level. But they also have to show that they have enough ridership to do that. And we, we work quite closely with RTA and our public works division, our, in our transportation folks, we're constantly working together on that. And so that's a comment we can give them, but I don't know how to answer that today.
Sure.
And I can't tell you whether that's, that's something that they'll consider, but we don't have the ability to do that as a city. So it would have to be with that agency.
Okay. And then also with zoning, if we're going to these mixed use zoning where we do commercial and residential and industrial, which I think is a great idea. If you have a, a piece of property and it's already zoned commercial, can you continue to just do commercial development on that property in the future?
Yes.
Or would, okay, so could you do industrial resident, I mean, can you mix? Does, does it have to be all three or can it be mixed up?
So we haven't written the policies on zoning yet, but today, for example, in a commercial zone where you're allowed to do mixed use, you could do 100% commercial or you could do residential on top of commercial or you could do a variety of types of commercial uses. So you can already do that. We don't intend to take those options away. But I'm not sure if we would require residential in a mixed use zone in the future. Kelly, do you have any thought on that? I don't think we would because the city actually benefits more from a commercial factor because we have the jobs and we have the potential tax revenue. And so I don't think we would want to go that route, even though we want the mixed use and residential.
Well, thank you, and that's all my questions.
Commissioner Cranza?
I was like, I don't want to forget these two. Okay, one of them is just quickly at the next steps at the end of our packet on the grand finale. Are we still going to be expecting an online, like living document instead of a hard copy giant bible? Great, because that is going to be really helpful. A digital, digitize it, great. Okay, I was just double checking. Okay, I was just double-checking, especially because we have an audience and people online listening to. And then as far as, I know that this is more of a vision and a North Star and more of a roadmap. The general plan is situated as such. And back when I was a planning commissioner newly, four years ago, we did a greenhouse gas emission report, and I remember us saying that a climate action plan was something that is outdated. We have to implement one, but it made more sense after the general plan. So as far as timeline, what does that look like? Because I know right after the general plan, it's gonna be the zoning.
So right now, we don't have financing. We don't have funding to do a new climate action plan. Cal Poly recently offered to assist us with that because they have a student team that likes to lead that effort, and we just, we didn't have the funding to support that because they still needed to get paid for that. But it is logical after the general plan. Once we set up all these new land use designations and new policies, the timing would be ripe for that. So we'll get there. And I think if that's something that the majority of the planning commission wants, they can ask us to continue to seek funding for that effort.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you had mentioned vehicle miles traveled and trying to reduce the VMT. I imagine that would then mean that you're trying to increase, say, walkability of the city in different areas? Is that correct?
That's part of the equation, but it's also, too, having the mixture of things that are available in your community, having the jobs in your community close to the housing, and having the commercial and retail and the things you need to buy close to the residential as well. It's about having those things in close distance, whether you have to drive there or walk there, but having them within a reduced distance.
Sure.
Radius.
And the next part to that would be, have you considered increasing walkability into the neighborhoods so that kids and pedestrians aren't walking in streets?
And that's what our mobility element's about. It looks for ways where we can enhance the pedestrian connections, where we can have bike routes, where we can have all these modes of transportation work together. But the difficulty about Atascadero is, especially our west side, you've got narrow roadways, narrow rights-of-way, and tree-lined streets, and it's challenging. A lot of those streets essentially share the pedestrian and bicycle traffic with the street. It's only in our commercial and our multifamily areas where we can really make big strides to doing that, where we can really establish separate bikeways, like the bike way that's along Highway forty-one, and where we can really establish sidewalks and pedestrian crossings. I mean, the fact remains, most of our west side, the traffic volumes are so low that you can share those things anyway, and we don't have a significant incident rate. But yes, generally, those are the goals.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, Vice Chair Person Anderson, my bad.
Thank you. Okay, I just had a, I really like the idea that overarching this entire general plan is what I've always called the stay-and-play mentality, is that we are a community that wants to spend its money in its community and do things in our community and with Beryl Creek and a lot of the other local developments that are happening. It gives us the opportunity to shop and play and have a theater and do these things, parks. It allows us to enjoy our local community without having to go too far. And I know a lot of people have been hearing, hearing a lot about the fifteen-minute city plans, and there's a lot of heat around that. But I do think that it doesn't make sense. Growing up in the LA basin, having to drive sometimes twenty minutes, twelve miles, sometimes two and a half hours, twelve miles, depending on the time of day. So it's very nice to be able to just, you know, jot down the street. I mean, I literally live a stone's throw in my younger years, a stone's throw from where I work. And it's just a nice, a nice idea. So I'm glad that you guys are keeping that in mind, and I'm glad that this general plan's going in that direction. What I would like to say is that I'd like to maybe have a meeting with you, Phil, and talk about the numbers, because as people go through their lives and they progress, homeownership is one of the number-one determinators of success in people's lives. You know, if you can own a home, it makes a big difference. So how are we gonna structure our community that someone can come into our community, get a job, and move through the cycles of apartment to maybe rental home to homeownership without having a mass amount of apartments that are owned by multinational conglomerates and never get that opportunity to own a home? How are we gonna keep that inventory stable and balanced?
I hear that more as a statement than a question. It's a, that's a very difficult question, in other words. And those are the, I mean, we have to write policies that get us there, but there's only so far we can go in terms of mandating private development. We have to encourage it to be done in certain ways through how we package the zoning in terms of what you can do with property development standards. And when we get into things like even the objective design standards that we recently adopted, these things try and encourage small lots that are of any size or shape, which encourages ownership properties to be developed with smaller units, which are starter homes. That's where we're trying to go with a lot of this new zoning, is not so much big apartment complexes, but these individually-owned, smaller lots and smaller sites. And that, that's the product, I believe, that will get us there.
I absolutely agree. I see that, I see the fact that we do need a lot of apartments. Right now, I've got an employee who's been having real trouble finding something affordable just for him and his sister. And it's really difficult that we don't, that housing costs have gone up so much. So I appreciate the focus on that, because as we try to accommodate our employees and our local citizens, but it's, I just commend you because this is a really.
It's hard. It's really hard, and we can get there through affordability by design. And affordability by design happens when, you know, we incentivize smaller units, essentially. It's all there is to it.
Yeah, I'm trying to give input, but it's, it's hard to find where. I'm trying to poke holes in your, in your plan, and I can't. So that's good. Thank you.
Commissioner Melo, do you have a question?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up a little bit. I appreciate Commissioner David and Penaccio, who asked transportation questions I was curious about. The one I wanted to follow up with, you mentioned the fire chief is working on fire accessibility as we move forward with plans. Will there be a time when we get more input from, you know, as things are developing? How does, how does he weigh in on how things move?
So being part of our department head team, I actually sit down and I meet with the fire chief weekly, and I also am sitting down with him to go through all of the safety element policies that are written in our general plan. He has already critiqued and commented on those, and we're gonna meet again to go through those. So that's how we collaborate on those particular topics. But the other issue I was alluding to isn't even part of our general plan. It's about being a fire-safe community and adopting standards and policies that can get us there. And doing that is more comprehensive. It's about designing new neighborhoods so that they have the appropriate road widths, the appropriate fire hydrant locations, the appropriate setbacks from, from the wildland, and appropriate vegetation around the homes and appropriate materials they're constructed with. And the new building codes already get there, but it's about adopting standards per neighborhood to get closer to that. And that's really what is gonna ultimately reduce insurance costs here and elsewhere in California. But we're adopting policies that go that direction, or we're suggesting the adoption of policies that go that direction, and he's weighed in very closely on the safety element already.
Thank you. I was also curious, this was kind of asked. The, if you could, I don't know if you can scroll back a little bit. It almost looked like a table of contents where you said what was gonna be in the plan. Yes, there was, that's what I was looking for. Is this all online, or will it be, or do we have a timeline of like?
This will all be online in a very short time, probably, like, hopefully, within a month. We'll have these draft chapters online, and you can read them all. I think already we have the introduction, the vision and guiding principles. Do we not have them all? We're going to, super soon.
Okay.
I promise.
That's what I was curious about, if we could at least get like that, that vision up.
Yeah, I thought we had, I thought we had.
Yeah, we don't have the actual chapters online, but we do have the True North Statement, I believe, and some other defining sort of pre-policies that the council has adopted.
Let's take a look, and we bring our Atascadero general plan website up on here. It was, we have a whole separate website for our general plan, by the way. You should explore it. And I don't know that we've updated it in the last couple of weeks, but let's take a look and see what's there, and we can show the audience how to get there. And Pascadero really has three websites. There's one that's just City of Atascadero, then there's Visit Atascadero, and then there's Atascadero General Plan twenty forty-five, which is the coolest one, where all of this stuff is going to be, and there it is, authentic, our city, our plan. So the section there that says documents, let's take a look and see what's there. It may not be populated yet.
So we have some of our secret documents. We have the Preferred Alternative Map that's posted, and then there's our Vision and Guiding Principles. So you.
So we do have those pieces, yeah. And then we have our Existing Conditions Report, which was done ahead of time. So there's some stuff there, but that's where you're gonna find those general plan documents by the end of the week, right, Kelly?
Yeah, of course.
No, it'll be within a month. They'll be there, they'll be there.
You can also find some of our past presentations. So the city councils received a lot of really focused presentations, whereas what you guys received tonight was an overview. And so if you or any member of the public wanted to go and dive a little deeper on the focus area process or the Preferred Alternative mapping process, you can go see those presentations from this website.
That's what us planning commissioners read for fun.
I know.
Any other questions? No? Nope? Okay, so back to me. So I guess, I guess I'd like to hear a little more detail on how the general plan or sort of what y'all are thinking about, like, the Kmart parking, the Kmart parking lot, the Kmart development or previous Kmart development. It's a strip mall, it's like basically empty, it's got a big weed-infested parking lot. I know it's privately owned, and so there's little we can do other than make policies that incentivize redevelopment. Is that kind of what we're trying to do with opening up those things for mixed use and other things to sort of incentivize the landlords or the owners to come in and spruce it up? Because it's a freaking eyesore.
Yes, so sites like that, you can actually really make happen through zoning. If you take the zoning and you say, all right, now you can actually do mixed use here, or now you can actually do more commercial, or now we can reduce your parking requirement, now we can make it more flexible for your property development standards. Typically, that can tip the scales and make a property develop. In that particular scenario, the city's a little frustrated, I'm gonna say that frankly, about that property and the fact that it has not moved forward. Kmart stopped paying their lease in October, and we're really hoping to incentivize something to happen. Our Economic Development Director, Laura Lycapple, is working with him to see things through. He tells us he does have tenants ready to move into that site, and there may be something coming for soon, but we haven't seen plans yet. And so at the end of the day, the city doesn't have much control on private property like that. And it's, we're at the mercy of that property owner, and that's a, that's a great opportunity site. And we're trying to manipulate that through incentivizing and creating policies in our plan that will incentivize things to happen, and we hope that comes to fruition. But even without that, we think something's gonna happen, so.
Also, I just wanted you to say that for all my Everything Atascadero people that are listening, because I know they're all listening, because they're always constantly like, why doesn't the city fix stuff? And it's like, we can, we can do zoning to incentivize, but other than that, we can't. So I just.
I just wish we had a book we could open up and just choose certain things to happen, and we had ultimate control. But if we had that level of control, we'd be corrupt.
It's called SimCity.
Yeah. That, yeah, exactly, there's that too.
Yeah.
So we don't have that level of control, and we don't want that level of control. We want guidance, and we want to incentivize, and we want to be here to help people do things, not be a hindrance.
Okay.
Really, that's what it comes down to.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so if there's no other questions, we can bring it back for discussion. Do you, are we motioning on this?
Yeah, we're gonna open this up for public comment, and then you can go into discussion afterwards.
So I will open it for public comment. If you'd like to comment, please come up to the podium. Please state your name before your comment, and we will limit it to three minutes per comment. So if you have anything you'd like to say, please come up to the podium.
Yeah, there should be a button there.
My name is Dave Garabey. I live on West Front Road. My question is to the general plan, is there any discussion? I heard you brought up the fire chief about adding an additional fire station on the south side of town.
So in public comment, you're gonna give us all of your questions, and then at the end of public comment, we'll address them all.
Okay, perfect. And then also for the south side of town, we have grocery stores that are in the central part of town, and now a grocery store that's in the north side of town. Is there going to be one in the south side of town? I don't know if that's been something that's been looked at, but a few of us have had that, both those questions. So we'd appreciate some kind of reply. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is David Athie. I represent Fred Athie at seventy-two fifty-five Portola Road. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. We're excited about the general plan update. It has been a long time. You know, we think jobs are good, you know, to incentivize. The need for housing is high, especially affordable housing, and I'm talking about for people who work and, you know, in all different types of jobs. The need for commercial development is really important. I think this is really gonna fall on the council and planning commission to not rezone property after you do this, and you've, and you've zoned property for commercial development and for industrial. Don't budge an inch, keep it industrial and commercial. Too many times, we've seen those properties turn into housing. Dove Creek, great example. So that'll be something for, you know, down the road when it's developed. Some of the things that we're concerned about, though, in Staff Report, Section Five, it talks about the properties outside the urban reserve line are rural residential, and the properties within are zoned residential. That's incorrect. There is a whole swath of properties that are being downzoned to rural residential within the urban reserve line. It's in your report, the nice map that's been generated. This essentially locks us into higher dwelling units per acre. You know, we're not looking to do a dense housing development or anything like that, but we would like to have the opportunity to develop the property, whether it's for grandkids or whatever, to sell in the future. You know, right now, we're zoned single-family residential, and we're going to rural residential. To me, it doesn't make much sense. We have close access to sewer. We, you know, Portola Road is an arterial, has plenty of capacity. Mr. Dunsmore talked about that, that the west side of town has tons of capacity in the circulation system. So we're kind of, we're a little bewildered by why that's happened. So if we could get an answer tonight on why those properties are being downzoned, that would be great. Also, I was curious if a traffic study is available. I'd like to look at the draft traffic study for the project, you know, and to see what. We've been told several times that intersections in different roads are heavily impacted and that we can't add more traffic on the west side. You know, I don't, from my experience as a traffic, doing traffic engineering and civil engineering, you know, I don't see that on the west side. So I'd like to look at that, and if we could find out if that's available, that'd be excellent. And also, why not allow greater flexibility in the general plan? So when we have a property that's available to develop, why not have standards? So when we have a property that's available to develop, why not have standards? Flat slopes, access to sewer nearby, doesn't have to be like right at the property line, but access to sewer, plenty of capacity in the roads. Why not build that into the general plan and really make a, make a general plan that works for the city and not just stuffs us into these like tight little zoning areas where you can only do this here, but let's have some, you know, flexible element in there. And thank you for letting me talk past my time.
You're welcome. Okay, some, a lot of this I'm going to send to you guys, but the fire station on the south side, I'm going to send over to you. The grocery store on the south side.
Commissioner Keen, if you want to close public comment.
Thank you. What would I do without you? Okay. So seeing nobody else, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission to answer some of these questions. So there is a grocery store going in at Dove Creek. Again, it's like we were just discussing, it's one of those things that we have to get somebody to own the land, who will rent it to a grocery store and have the space to get it done. But there is a market going in in Dove Creek in the new commercial center on that corner of Santa Barbara and El Camino. So the other thing that I just want to address before I send it to the thing is, so you mentioned like putting specifics in the general plan. So as far as I can understand, the general plan is a general plan. And so the specifics would go into the zoning and the and the permitting process of what they need to do to develop the property, right? That would not go in the general plan. So if y'all could comment on the fire station on the south side and then the the urban services line and what exactly that is. And can you specifically say what you're considering the west side, whether that's everything south and west of El Camino? Or if that's, you know, what is the west side that you're referring to? And then the development there, the down zoning, and then the specifics on grading and such.
Perfect. Yes, thank you. I'll start with grocery stores. Obviously the city can't choose what grocery store we get or where they actually go. What we can do is choose to zone properties to allow such things. The property at Dove Creek has been zoned that way for well over 15 years and has sat vacant unfortunately. Now there is some retail use going in there, maybe a small grocery restaurant, not going to be significant. So the furthest south big grocery store is still going to really be, you know, your, your smart and final on your food for last. And then further north of that, the bond. So hopefully more is attracted to that area. It's allowed today to happen. In terms of a fire station, right now, there is a plan to reconstruct fire station number one. That's well underway. That's going to happen. It's going to be much larger and handle much bigger capacity. Fire station number two, which is already on the south side over there at West Front, is going to be upgraded as well. That'll serve the whole south side. And then in the far distant future, the city is kind of holding on to land near Del Rio for potential fire station number three, but that's not in the works yet. So those really are the ones that we need based on how they can migrate through the city to best handle all of the city's needs. In terms of the other topic area about the west side, the real west side kind of begins at Portola Road. That's where the zoning changes. And it changes because the city changes topographically from that area. And it changes where we can serve it with wastewater services and how we can handle a major wildfire event. And where our rural west side character really begins to change and take shape to larger lot sizes. In terms of down zoning properties, I don't think that's the intent. I'm going to have Kelly elaborate further on that and and kind of answer David Athie's question on these particular properties and why preliminary boundaries have been selected. But again, we haven't finalized anything yet. That gets finalized with a zoning map.
So in our current general plan, we have four categories for single family general plan designations. We have single family X, single family Y, single family Z, and residential suburban. Those letters don't mean anything to you unless you're a planner at the city of Atascadero. And so what we're doing with this general plan is consolidating some of those general plan designations. And then they will still have zoning designations that correspond to today's existing minimum lot sizes. So in most cases, on what Phil refers to as the west side, those minimum lot sizes will be staying the same. In areas that have sewer along their property frontage, directly available to hook up. Those are areas that we're potentially looking at near the center of town for upzoning. So no minimum lot sizes are going to grow from this general plan designation. They'll stay the same, or where you're really close to town, we might allow additional density.
And then the specifics on.
So I believe the Athies parcels are on Portola. And so they have access through the rear of their lot, through somebody else's lot to some potential sewer. When we look at general plan designations and zoning, that is what is allowed on the property once that general plan designation is approved. So if sewer is not directly on the property's frontage, we have a disconnect between what the plan says you can do and then what you can do because of the distance to services. So we're really, the council gave us direction to only look at areas for upzoning that have direct sewer access along their property frontage.
And that requirement of the direct, that would be in the zoning, not in the general plan?
Correct. But the, the general plan sets the, the form for that. So the state actually tells us that your general plan is what you're telling people they can do. And so there's a lot of sort of state housing laws out there that tell you that if the general plan says you can do it, you can do it. And so we want to make sure that our, our services and our wastewater areas and our fire protection areas are aligned with what we are saying in our general plan and the boundaries that we're drawing.
Thank you. Generally. Okay. So I'll bring it back for discussion and we're making a motion to recommend this. We're not making a motion.
This is simply informational tonight.
Okay.
No action, no recommendation. When we come back next, we'll meet, I'll meet next time. We'll be, we'll be back in the future.
Okay.
And you, we will ask you to write a recommendation. We may come back to you again before that even happens with more information.
Okay. So I guess any last comments, questions or anything else that, that you'd like from staff to clarify anything in this informational meeting? No? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Cronze.
I was just given a little pause here for my fellow commissioner.
Dramatic, dramatic pause.
Well, I just, oh, hold my hand. So I was curious. There was a couple of things. So Wendy went and made a comment for the first five as a public comment via email. And we all read it about childcare. We addressed a little bit of it with commissioners. Chair Keen's question about where does childcare fit in with the general plan? I was just curious because the vision statement is authentic Atascadero and then it goes into some jargon. And I also was looking at the, the big moves language and we talk a lot about business and even a business friendly city. So I'm thinking, you know, I've talked to the, the city deputy quite a bit too about family friendly communities and just where that jargon might fit. And it seems like a grander vision in the grander vision for statement or some of those big moves, the language should be moved up for that.
Yeah, like an emphasis on that it's like a conjoined circle, like in order to be business friendly, you have to provide services for the workers who are going to work there.
Well, even if you're not intending to build a family or at least building a family in Atascadero, there's many benefits to having a family friendly community, even if you're not growing your own family here. I would assert that. But, you know, that would also, I think, move forward, like implementation strategies for family friendly workplaces. And what does that look like for the city to incentivize that? And those details wouldn't be included in a general plan, but they would help support more incentives for that going forward. So I just, that wasn't, like the word family at all wasn't represented. So I was just surprised.
Cause it's families of all kinds. It may not be a small child you're caring for.
Intergenerational families, aging families. Yeah, it doesn't have to be.
I don't think the city council consulted us on any of this, which.
Well, we're here to just do some comments. And so that's why, you know, round act being the case, I'm not going to individually scout out all of you to have this conversation. I would love to have coffee with all of you, but it's not the case. So I'm here to talk about it.
No, I agree. I think that business friendly is, business friendly is good, but like families come in all shapes and sizes. And I think that including, you know, family in that. I think it might be important. So if you can just send that in a memo to the city council, include family. Okay, thanks. Anything else, Commissioner Cronze?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Something. Yeah. Well, I was looking at also in the very beginning of our studies with the general plan, I know there was elements that were optional. And anytime you add another element, that is not just a voluntary act of kindness, that is a lot of extra labor and a lot of extra money and time. So I get that first and foremost, but also there's ways we can weave it in. And so things like water, I know that was a, a voluntary element that was not put in. And then there was one about mitigating of environmental impacts. I think it was like environmental justice or something. And so those were two elements where I'm like, well, I'd love to see in a, a more detailed report. And perhaps it's in our website where there's more focused city council presentations of where maybe some of those things that I, I would like to look for would be. Yeah. So. Yeah. Cause I think that idea that was brought up, I think with Phil around Cal Poly, you know, there's a team probably in the city planning department wanting to help with. Yeah. Mitigating environmental impacts. I mean, it's called a climate action plan, but you know, wanting to have those implementation strategies and having a team that's focused and work on those. I think that's really important. Call it a buzzword, but I think that those things are going to implement what we're trying to get at with the general plan, like low impact development and greenhouse gas emissions reduction, VMT reductions and urban tree management plan, which we don't have. So things like that.
And Phil did say that's something that we can ask staff to go look for funding for. And I think that that is a good idea to do probably after the general plan, because I know it would incorporate well with the general plan. But since this is such a huge endeavor, we may just have to wait until after, but don't write it down somewhere, like write it on your palm so you don't forget it. And then once we've got this general plan done, I think asking them to go find some funding so that we can get a climate action plan, I think is, is really important. And did you want to say something, Phil?
Pardon. Yeah. Voice went out there. Commissioner Cronze, I heard you mention environmental justice. I just want to clarify that is one of the mandatory elements. But that is kind of separate and, oh, not for you guys. Oh, my apologies. Sorry about that. I written that, but there are kind of other portions of the general plan that often speak to some of the optional elements, if not addressed formally.
Oh, and the last one. All of you get to hear random reports that I give about public art all the time.
We're not there yet.
Yeah. For what?
For your random report.
Oh, well.
Okay, okay. Just checking, just checking.
This last one in.
All right, perfect.
I've been a big proponent, as y'all know, as a volunteer for murals and such, but I think that, yeah, I was reading the big moves and specifically D2 and E1. I think those little key policy notes, I don't know if we can go to address public infrastructure needs, but the D2 and E1, could we go back to that slide at all? Instead of looking at our beautiful faces.
I don't know that we have it broken down on the slide by the same as the
Oh.
The attachment though. Yeah.
Got it. Well, I have them circled, so I could just read them. It's a sentence, but. Yeah. One is D2 is implement streetscape improvements along the ECR and Morale Road near major planned residential employment nodes incentivize new development. I was like, well, that would be a great place for more public review art committee. And then another portion is E. One of the key policy considerations in E, acknowledge. No, not that one. Prioritize public investments that have a positive influence on long-term economic growth, including focusing infrastructure improvements within employment generating focus areas like the downtown. But anyhow, I just think, yeah, if we're, if we're going to wait around for something like that to fall in our lap, I don't think it's going to happen. So. And if, I think moving that forward in the future ties into this public art review.
Oh, a public art review committee as part of those two things.
Yes, yes. There's more, but those two specifically, I was just looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe when we get asked for a recommendation, we can send it to city council that for those two big moves, we think that a public art review is a thing and we can all think about it. Cause of course you have to vote on it.
Because tonight's just a presentation, but again, I think sometimes we move so fast to get to dinner, so to speak. That this is our time to talk and discuss about things. So I thought it was appropriate.
Yeah. Uh-oh. Vice Chairperson Anderson?
Thank you. Hey, Chairperson Keen. Well, you know, this is, this has very been, been a very good discussion and I think the general plan is is where we get to kind of vent all this stuff and, and kind of make the stew that we get to kind of move around and definitely I'm interested in art in the downtown area. Victoria, Chairperson Victoria, as Corinzo was talking about. Because art can both inspire and offend. And it's very important that we as a community come together and enjoy our community together. And that's, that's what I'm inspired by, you all. And I'm interested in creating this unique experience that is a Tascadero so that we can not become something that is cookie cutter or boiler, boilerplate across, you know, a lot of different areas I've, I've visited in California. That we see just, you know, very lackluster cities. And, you know, you go into the city councils, meeting halls, and they're all about the city, but you can't tell them the difference, the difference between them. So we're unique in that aspect. And I've traveled all over the state and Atascadero does have something very special. I think it's because everybody on the council and everybody who's been in these seats over the last 30 years has worked so hard to make sure that it is special. And so I just want to commend you guys, I want to commend Phil for all his work and Kelly and everybody else in the staff and that. Thank you so much. I'm just pleased to be here. I'm really, really happy to be part of this. I feel so inferior to the great minds that I work with. So thank you.
You're not inferior. You're just one piece of the planning commission puzzle. Yeah, I think that a lot of our moves in the general plan are general enough that we can find ways to keep Atascadero's character and uniqueness, and I forget the other words on the website, authentic, authenticityness. Okay. Yeah. Authentic Atascadero. So yeah, so write down those notes so that we can remember to recommend them when we're supposed to recommend them. And any other comments, questions? Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Okay. Just a comment real quick. I, I do love the vision statement, the, the authentic Atascadero. But if, if you go back to our origins, it was very innovative in its time. So I love to see that you've, you've added this piece on section B that's listed for new industries, looking at some of those possibilities. Cause really that was the original vision. So I think it's good to, to keep that in mind too. Thank you for that.
Okay. Do you need anything else from us? Do you need more glowing words of how wonderful you all are?
Thank you for all of your comments. Very thoughtful. Great part of the process and we're going to keep moving forward. And we've heard a bit from the public. We've heard a bit from you. These are all the building blocks of pulling this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm scrolling back to my next step because I forgot. Nope, that's the minutes. Okay. So that was a community development staff report. We have no public hearings, so we don't have to do disclosure of ex parte communication. And we're going to move on to commissioners' comments and reports where I am now allowed to ask about Oak Ridge Estates. Thank you. Okay, so Oak Ridge Estates. I know you can't share a ton, and that's totally fine, but I'm curious. Beyond the regrading of that one lot, do we know if any new updated reports have been sort of triggered? And can you remind me when that plan was approved by Atascadero?
When you say plan, do you mean plan for Oak Ridge Estates in total?
Yes.
Oak Ridge Estates is quite an old project. And so it was over twenty five years ago that an environmental impact report was approved for a lot line adjustment. Wasn't even a new subdivision. It was adjusting the lines of existing colony lots that were created for the original Atascadero colony out there. So they they purchased all of these old lots, a couple hundred of them, adjusted lot lines to make them more logical and created a new tract called Oak Ridge Estates. And then the environmental impact report was written at that time, many years ago, and it's still valid today and still guides development out there for that area. And it's just developed very, very slowly, includes Senegal Road, San Marcos Road, and a whole bunch of new roads that are being developed. So unfortunately, recently, the city did find out that there was grading activity going on outside of an authorized lot. So each lot comes to the city, comes for approval. We look at the the plans for it. We approve them to build a house and do the grading. And so we were doing that for several of the lots along a new road up there. And inadvertently, they went outside of that lot to grade a larger area. Part of it was to get access to repair some slides that had happened along Senegal, but part of it was also just accessory to a lot that was there, potentially to build accessory building or structure or something. But in any case, it wasn't on the plans, it wasn't approved by the city, and it's close to another property below that, that another person has a house there. And so they noticed the grading, notified the city. We investigated, we determined it wasn't approved. We asked for more information from the developer. They did hire an engineer, they surveyed the property, they gave us the information on the grading, which further gave us information that it was done outside of the boundary and done within an open space area of Oak Ridge Estates. So now the city is mandating that that be restored, that a grading be removed and the property be brought back to somewhat of a natural condition. We will require a plan to be reviewed and approved by the city before he does that restoration work. We haven't received that plan yet. And we will go through a code enforcement process to make that happen. These things can take some time to unravel. And so I'm asking for the public's patience and the property owner that's nearby that patience while we work with that. We're doing all we can to make it right and to use our city powers to make the, you know, the correction and the enforcement happen.
And are we going to keep a close eye on further developments in that area since they violated that one one?
We are out there almost every day doing inspections on other properties. They're doing grading now on various other properties where they are developing. And we're keeping a close eye on everything as best as we can. Yes, it just so happened that this particular thing wasn't visible for any of us except for a property owner that backs up to it. It's on a steep hillside in a very rural area that's not visible from any public streets very readily and wasn't even visible from the lot that was being worked on, that was approved, which is called Lot eighty eight. So almost invisible, except for from the rear yard of the folks that sent us a letter and alerts to the issue. So we're really thankful for that.
And and this is what we should do, is let the city know if there are questions of things going on in your neighborhood and you're like, that looks weird.
Exactly. Anytime anybody sees anything out in the city, they can reach out to us, they can call us. Definitely, if you see some construction going on that concerns you, call the community development department. You can call me. You can call Annette at our central reception. You can call Kelly, or you can call Eric, or our new planner Will, or Sam, any of us. But community development is a place to go to. Originally, that call came in through a different avenue, and it took a few days for the note to get across to us. But we finally got it, we finally went and investigated, and we found this, so thankful for that.
I love it when things work like they're supposed to.
Yes, so we're following up, but these things can take time, it's it's a difficult process.
Well, thank you for all the information.
Sure.
Any other reports or comments from commissioners about things? Yes, Commissioner Panaccio?
You had mentioned at Oak Ridge that part of why their grading was to clean up a slide that had happened. And I'm just curious, if a slide happens on somebody's property, what level of cleanup are they, for safety reasons or something like that, are they allowed to do, if any? Or what should they do if there's a slide on a property like that?
It all depends where that slide goes. In this particular scenario, the slide happened on private property, but it led down to a public road. And so they were working with our public works team to remedy that slide. If you drive up Senegal, you can see the slide I'm referencing here. There's some concrete waterways and things that slid down on that very steep section of that road. So it all depends on where a slide happens. If it's on private property, that private property owner is responsible and needs to work to fix that. But they always, in every scenario, when you're fixing a landslide, you need to come to the city and you need to get to hire a civil engineer and you need to come in with a grading plan, an erosion plan, a drainage plan to do that. You can't just go out and even if there's a landslide, go out and do grading to fix it. You can't just go out and grade land or remove trees or do things without getting approval from the city. And that's the biggest thing to know for everyone out there. And this is an active slide area. A lot of Oak Ridge Estates has really unstable soils. It's an area that's known for landslide risk. It has steep slopes, it's got heavy clay soils. And it's, that's the nature of that area. So and that road, Senegal Road, was graded in with very steep slopes. One to one, in some cases, they did that to preserve trees, but it turned out that it's too steep and it's it's prone to sliding.
Thank you. Yeah, I drove up that road, I was shocked.
Okay, we'll move on to director's report.
Thank you. I'm not sure about what future projects we have to bring you, but there are some. But what I did want to tell you is that it was about sixty years ago today that a man named Ralph M. Brown, he was an assemblyman from Modesto, California, concerned about the secrecy and privacy of meetings, created the Brown Act. And this is some training we wanted to bring you. And our city attorney, whom you may have may have not met, Dave Fleishman, who's in addition to our city attorney here, Taylor, would like to join you for a training session. But unfortunately, he is a busy man. And most Tuesday nights that we meet here at commission, he's at another city's city council, helping them out. So we're looking for a date that's not a regular planning commission date that we can get you guys together with our legal team and with our staff so we can go through that training and we can kind of see that as a little bit of a strategic planning session, too. Talk about the Brown Act, talk about general things and rules and stuff. And so I wanted to get a read and a little bit of a poll of the commission tonight to see what days of the week might be best, and we can schedule this out and we can get that on the calendar. I know I brought this up a few weeks back, but we got busy with the general plan and haven't nailed it down. Kelly's going to show me a calendar. It sounds like there's a leap Tuesday or a fifth Tuesday in April, the end? Oh, what's the date on that?
April twenty ninth?
The twenty ninth of April, so there's no city, so that might be a non-city council hearing for Dave. And it might be a non-planning commission here for us, and Taylor's gonna, yeah. Okay, so let's, let's take a look at that date, but how about your calendars yourself? If we can have at least five of you there, I would say that would be a target.
That works for me, the twenty ninth.
Okay.
Commissioner Heath?
I'm fine with the twenty ninth.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Tuesdays aren't great for me, but that's just spring. I have baseball and softball right now. So I could make it work if we decide, and so I can get things.
And we can choose the time of day as well. It could be six AM in the morning, could be six PM at night.
It will not be six AM. What are you even talking about?
Our chair says no to that. I would agree with you there, but I mean, we.
Would like later, like seven work for you better on a Tuesday night?
Yeah, probably so, if it's at night.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice Chairperson Anderson?
You know, I have to take the trash out that night.
And wash your hair?
And wash my hair. No, that that would be perfect, yeah, the twenty ninth, Tuesday, perfect.
Okay, Commissioner Cronze?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, Commissioner David?
Yes, that works for me.
And Commissioner Panaccio?
Seven's too late, I think six fifty five would be better.
Bunch of sarcastic.
Not to, do we have any other just days to keep in mind? And just want to have some options available, just in case.
Okay, so all of us are available on April twenty ninth?
Yes, I'm just wanting to give Dave some options just in case. It should work, but I.
He could be on a photo shoot up in Alaska with bears, I'm not sure.
Very true.
Check it out.
Yeah.
I would suggest an alternate.
Yes, so.
A Wednesday would be, would be good if everybody else is good with that.
Wednesdays, Wednesdays? We could look at either Wednesday, the twenty third, or Wednesday, the thirtieth?
Okay, thank you for those additional.
Okay. Which one? Okay, well.
I'm just putting both in my.
We don't need you, we need five others of us, yeah. Commissioner Heath, does the twenty third or the thirtieth work for you?
It does, just depending on time of day.
Okay, what time of day would work best?
Either early afternoon or after like six or six thirty.
Okay. Commissioner O'Malley?
Both of those days work, similar time to to what.
So like seven?
Yeah, seven o'clock would be fine, or if you pushed it into the morning, that'd be all right.
And we're looking at like an hour?
Yeah, probably an hour, an hour and a half with questions so that we can address anything that comes up.
Okay, I just got to make sure I'm home for bedtime, so I don't want to go too long and start too late.
Not the morning.
Commissioner Cronze?
Evenings are great, but not the mornings.
No, no mornings, absolutely not.
I'm gonna be wide awake, but definitely with two children.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so will our children. Commissioner David, twenty third and thirtieth?
Yes, those dates work.
At seven PM?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Panaccio?
Yes, those dates work.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No comments.
All right. So we can do the twenty third, the twenty ninth, or the thirtieth. Any of those three dates will work, and we'd like it to start at seven.
Perfect, thank you so much.
That's what I do. It's perfect, that's what I do. No, you said six fifty five. I didn't agree, and I'm the chair, so I get to flex my power every like once in a very great while. Anything else, Mr. Director? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so I guess all that's.
I'm sorry, so sorry, one more item. Kelly just reminded me. I would like to do a formal introduction to Will Daniels, our newest assistant planner. Started work yesterday. He's going to come to the podium and make a speech about a few things about.
Yeah, we're expecting at least fifteen minutes, please. We'd like a full historical background, where you're from, mom and dad's names, all that.
I think today is, I think today might be his birthday. Is it your birthday today? Oh, my gosh, happy birthday, I forgot to mention that. By the way, happy birthday, Will.
I'm sorry, are we allowed to sing happy birthday very loudly and embarrassingly?
Yes.
I feel like that's a great welcome, because I was gonna ask you if you'd hazed him yet, but I feel like this would be the perfect hazing. So Will, welcome to the planning. I'd like you to stand right here in front, please, as we sing happy birthday, out of tune loudly and embarrassingly. Okay, and I invite the audience members to join in as we wish Will a happy birthday. Ready? One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Will. Happy birthday to you. Welcome to, welcome to Atascadero. We like to have a little bit of fun at the planning commission.
See, unique.
Unique, so unique, love the unique. All right, anything else, Phil? Promise?
Oh, one more thing. Happy April Fool's Day, that was it.
Okay, then I will officially adjourn this meeting at seven forty seven. Oh, to our next meeting, which I don't have a date for. Okay, our next meeting will be April fifteenth, but we don't have any items, so that may get canceled, so we'll let you know. Great, now it's officially adjourned.